No. Um, he doesn't play there. Yeah, no, he's with FCS. He's a consultant. Absolutely, yeah, I can totally see that now, yeah. Let's see, was there anything we needed to? Nope, not there yet.
And it's just like, really cool.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Youth Counselor Turley.
Here.
Council President Goodhouse.
Here.
Counselor Newton.
Here.
Counselor Lou.
Here.
All right, all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in whose liberty and justice are our.
All right, staff and council, any non-agenda items?
None from staff, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to public comment. Is there any follow-up to previous public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, last week you heard from the Tigard Little League and a non-agenda item requesting a resolution supporting the Little League World Series to be bid to be in Tigard, and you'll see on your agenda tonight that there's a resolution to support.
Thank you. All right, and then we will move on to Tigard High School Envoy, ASB President Sarah Gentry. Good to see you. Come on up, make sure you remember to turn the microphone on, get the light to turn green. There you go.
So this past month at Tigard was kind of quiet, as well as the winter season, but we had Shrek the Musical, which was a huge success, they sold out on opening night. We also, our Club of the Month this month is Mali UEN, so they go down to April, they go down to state, and this year Tigard's representing Somalia, so we're super excited. We're doing a cannon food drive, it's extended to this Friday, and our goal is 10 bands for St. Vincent de Paul. As well, our dance team, the Tigarets, got first in jazz and third in palm at their category championships for the fall season this past weekend. Our guitar and jazz programs have their annual holiday concert this Saturday. Our choir program has their annual show at the Grotto representing Tigard tomorrow. The FALA Giving Tree already has dozens of donations for families in the community, especially students at Tigard. And lastly, our boys varsity basketball team got first in their tournament this past weekend, and I was there, and there was some good dunking.
Any questions? Thank you for the update. All right, next on the agenda is going to be an update from Chief McAlpine, from the Police Department.
Well, happy holidays, Mayor and Council. You have it, I don't have it, that's okay, I should know it, there we go. Again, just a reminder, this is November's dashboard, so we have one more month left of 2019, but as you can see, this is an overview of how we're trending. We are 20% below last year in persons crime, which is great. Property crimes were almost 19% lower than last year. Our societal crimes are ticking upwards to almost 22%. And again, that can be some proactive stuff of DUIs and drug offenses, but it also can be your disorderly conduct, domestic violence, et cetera. And then, again, as we're trending for dispatch calls, we're about the same as last year, maybe .1. And then our response times for this month was much better, and trending downward a little bit, still on that, a little over six minutes for our Priority One and Two calls. The other thing I'd like to focus on, you're just going to take just probably an extra two minutes than I normally do, I usually show you this, and for those in the audience and anybody that might be listening, again, this is behavior health calls, so this can be homelessness issues, mental health issues, drugs, or the whole thing together. Again, you know, 62% of our call will fall in these categories, or have some component of this, and about 174 were actual dispatch, and then 68 self-initiated for 242. What does that really look like? So an example of some, these are pages, and I'm just pulling out a couple, but this would be a daily thing. But we responded at a little after midnight to a homeless subject wandering around the businesses, we ended up arresting him on a warrant. This took three officers and about two hours and 20 minutes to resolve it, from the time we got the call to the time we actually booked this person into jail. Another one was just an intoxicated homeless person that voluntarily went to Hoopers, that was an hour and 25 minutes to handle that call. Another transient situation at a hotel that resulted in warrants was another hour and a half. Frequent caller with mental illness issues and asking for evictions, took an officer an hour and 20 minutes. We had a theft in progress at one of our big box stores that took five officers to contain, and it took almost two hours. And mind you, when we have multiple officers, as soon as it's safe and we resolve it, then it will go down to that one officer, but just to resolve this, it may take more. Just a traffic stop with a transient and drugs took three hours and 46 minutes by the time you got him through the jail, got the drugs packed, and the reports written. Four officers to handle a subject with mental illness on the top of a roof, safely resolved, taken to the hospital, but took an hour. And, you know, I try to sit there and go, how can I go on and on, but I just think sometimes I need to put a little more context to the numbers on what that might look like. And a lot of times, these are happening at all hours of the day and night, and sometimes I think they go unnoticed, and it doesn't really impact our community as much as kind of knowing what's going on. A last one I'll say is, you know, we have a abandoned house, it's known as a squatter's house, took five officers and found drugs and a warrant, and somebody went to jail, took three hours and 42 minutes. So you can imagine, if that started out with five officers, that's the entire shift, until we can get everything under control, everything else has to wait, or if we're lucky. In one of these incidences, we did have a neighbor and agency that came and handled another priority call for us while we were tied up. So again, this is kind of some of the things that we're dealing, these are the types of calls that are taxing our resources, and I know I'm speaking to the choir, and you guys have all been very supportive, but again, I just want to put a little bit more narrative to what's going on there. And at this point, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you for the update, and I think adding a little bit of color commentary is helpful so people understand, you know, numbers are one thing, and hearing what kinds of calls they are are another, so thank you. All right, and that concludes your report. Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have Community and Membership Engagement Manager Love from the Tigard Chamber of Commerce. Remember to turn the mic on there. Thank you.
Good evening. So for the Chamber of Commerce, we had our Leadership Tigard class meet today, they learned about human needs, so they toured the Edwards Center, the Mole, and then they heard from Child Welfare Partnership, and then Community Partnership for Affordable Housing, and Project Homeless Connect. Next month is going to be on business and economy. We had four members join the chamber in November, and Debbie is currently working on building a committee for workforce development, and then is also working on drafting a workforce development program outline, so that we can kind of talk about what our hopes are for this program. And then, we would like you to save the date for Bowlarama, February 29th, Saturday at Tigard Hall. Registration is now open. And then, also save the date for the Tigard Shining Stars Community Awards Gala, which is going to be on May 1st. We are now accepting nominations for the Community and Business Awards, and that can be done through the Tigard Chamber website, and the college scholarship application, and the community college and vocational program scholarship application will be opening up in the next week or so. And then, we have networking every Thursday at 7:30. This week, we'll be at King City Senior Village. We have our Healthcare Fanatics Group, which is on January 7th, Home Garden and Design Group on January 14th, and check our calendar for more details. For the farmer's market, we had a great wreath making class, and we're currently planning for the 2020 season. Vendor applications are going to be opening up in early January, and then I have a lot for Downtown Tigard Alliance, so apologies. Small Business Saturday was great, we had 23 businesses participate, which is our highest participation yet. The Tigard Downtown Alliance also hosted an annual meeting, and we launched the new directory on the website, and Chris Hedinger with Beach Adelie and myself got elected to the board, and we'll be recruiting for more board members in February. We had nine businesses participate in the window decorating contest, Pro Design Solutions won the People's Choice, and Wags Pet Resort won the Judges' Choice. And then, the holiday tree lighting was great, and we had a lot of businesses participating. So do Tiger, thank you for all your help. TVF NAR, Landmark Ford, Sherry's Jewelry Box, Symposium Coffee, McDonald's, Sean Gardner Dancing, they all helped make that event possible. Any questions?
I'll bet that went really well.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to public communication. I have one person that signed up, please come on up and state your name for the record.
Thank you. I'm Josh Breeze, I'm the President of Tigard Little League, so you've heard from one of my colleagues last week, and saw my board represented. You know, there's a resolution on the agenda this evening to support and have the interest of the Softball Little League World Series held at Park, Tigard. So, just really quickly, I wanted to say thank you. I know it's not easy, and this is, we've been dealing with a little bit of information going back and forth, and I know that I want to say thank you to the parks and the city manager as well, the Parks Division, and the city council, just because I know it's not easy to move things through really quickly, and I appreciate the consideration. I want to give a little bit more information, if I might, really quickly. I've been in communication with Little League throughout this whole process, I've been the point of contact for the VP of Operations there. One of the things that we're competing against is really a turnkey solution, and that is something that he has made very clear to me continually, of, I have other places, he keeps saying that, you know, we can just walk in and be ready. What I have been pitching and what I have been putting forward is really the Tigard community and what we can bring to the table, not only that it's been here for so long, but that the city is really kind of. So the resolution tonight, although we are up against some long odds for this, the resolution tonight is really a show of, we do support the housing community, and that does matter to Little League. Little League in general is built around community. Every teams or forms, not from city to city, but within those cities around schools, and community is extremely big to them. Even if we don't end up winning this bid for this, I think this resolution is really important, because what it does is shows that there are, this is one opportunity. Little League has other large tournaments such as regionals, state tournaments, those kinds of things, that can bring, maybe not the prestige of the Little League Softball World Series, but other, can put Tigard in a position of, really, the envy of other communities around us. As a president, I deal with other presidents within all the different communities, not only here locally, but within the state, and some of them do not have the backing of their city councils, don't have the backing of their city in general. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that it was really appreciated, that it even came up for this, and that I hope that we put it forward in the program. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is to consider a resolution to appoint Budget Committee members. Confidential Executive Assistant Lutz.
Hello.
Hi, good to see you.
Ms. Lutz with the Finance Department, and I'm here for your consideration on a resolution to appoint Budget Committee members. Due to regularly expiring terms, we have one voting member and one alternate position that is available, and the Appointments Committee, excuse me, Counselor Lou and Council President Goodhouse interviewed seven candidates, and they have chosen Siobhan Chandler as the voting member, and Leah Voight as the alternate for next year.
Okay, and both of them are present, correct?
They are both present.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-47.
I second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City Recorder, please read the number and title of the resolution.
Resolution Number 19-47, a resolution appointing Siobhan Chandler to the Budget Committee as a voting member, and appointing Leah Voight as an alternate member.
Before we vote, I want to make sure that both of them know that assuming the vote passes, I would like to congratulate you over at the end of the podium, and give you a City of Tigard pin. So, with that, we will take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. 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 Any opposed? Okay, Resolution Number 19-47 is adopted unanimously. All right, we'll move on to item number four, consider a resolution of support for the World Series Girls Softball at Cook Park. Mr. Reiger, and a guest, I see.
Yes, good evening, Brian Reiger, Public Works Director, and with me tonight is Martin McKnight, our Parks Operations Supervisor. So as you've already heard, we're here tonight with that resolution of support that you asked us to bring. You also asked us, the last time we talked, to come back with some answers to questions. At the time, we didn't have a lot of information as to what all of the improvements that would be needed at Ballpark, Ball Field Number One, and we have that detail, and as you see in your AIS, there are two specific things that Little League has asked Tigard to provide. One is to upgrade the backstop, and the price tag for that, we estimate is somewhere in the neighborhood of $25,000. The other item is a perimeter fence, and that, we think, should come in around $5,000, so the total is $30,000. We would contract that work out, that's not work that we would do ourselves. And so as you see in our report, we're recommending that how we pay for that would be using the transient lodging tax, and that would be a great match for that. From a operational standpoint, Martin can speak to this if you have further questions, but we think that we can support the event for that week with existing resources. We anticipate daily crowds to be in the neighborhood of 13, 1500 people, and that's about a bit for the size of the going festival. So we think it's achievable, and we support the event. So with that, our recommendation is to adopt the resolution. So what I'm hearing you say is that we can do what is needed, and we can fund it. Correct. Our recommendation, again, is using the TLT.
TLT to fund it. Understood. Who's got questions? Council President Goodhouse.
One clarification, so are we doing the work, no matter what, are we doing the work if we get the award, I guess, get the series to come?
We'd probably wait, I'm guessing we would wait on doing that work until we know for sure that if we've been selected.
Okay.
With the backstop portion, we do have a plan to add coming next fall along with artificial terms, so that would be, that's all we're gonna be on, but that's not so much.
Okay.
Counselor Newton.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Reiger, but last week, I seem to remember that there was discussion about a need to upgrade the stands. Did I misunderstand, or?
That's correct. So, some of the other items that we talked about, and Martin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I was looking at my notes, and yes, the hope is that they would bring in some additional seating for the event, and they're anticipating, they're trying to look for other resources for that. Other things that are needed is lighting, they're also expecting that to be provided by others, and a temporary broadcast hour, I think I spoke to that the last time, and there's thought that probably ESPN might bring in something like that.
But those are not viewed as barriers or things that we, as a city, have to address?
No.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Just to have one comment, I was remembering our budget process last time, and I agree this would be a good match for the transient lodging tax, the TLT, and I didn't recall that we had any other projects really waiting in the wings at the current time, and I checked that with the Finance Director and the City Manager, and so, yeah, I think that's a good use of the funding, and we won't have to move any other projects off or programs off to do that.
Just speaking of that, do you want to give a clarification just on, kind of what Counselor Newton said? There's a certain part of the TLT tax, transient lodging tax, that has to be used on bringing people certain miles away, and so if you want to give a little clarification on how that works and the money she was referring to?
Not sure I am.
Maybe better to have Toby come and explain that, I don't, I'm not sure that's a Mr. Reiger question, but.
That's a good point.
So generally, with the transient lodging tax, a certain amount is allowed to be used for general city operations, the majority of it has to be used towards things that essentially promote tourism, which means that we're bringing people in, who either spend the night, or come from over 50 miles away. The reason, with something like softball, Little League World Series, we're definitely drawing people from more than 50 miles away from City of Tigard, and it would be capital facilities, the type of thing that a transient lodging tax is intended to do.
Thank you. Something is a complicated issue, so it makes a little more sense to people where we have part we can use, and then there are part where it's meant to bring people in, so this is a perfect match, as Counselor Newton said.
Counselor Lou.
I just want to acknowledge that I think, as a council, we certainly ask a lot of the City of Tigard staff, and you have a lot on your plates, and this is something that we asked you to look into quickly and efficiently, and there was a lot of different things going on, and I just want to say I really appreciate the thought that you took and your willingness to participate with other community members, as well as the World Series, to sort of figure out if this is a possibility. So I just, I want acknowledgement to say thank you for going above and beyond to see if this is something that can happen, because I think it's such a cool opportunity, if it's something that we could have here. So, thank you for your extra work above and beyond to take a serious look at this and bring us forward a recommendation.
Other comments, questions, or a motion? Counselor Anderson.
So just to restate what Martin had said, that we are planning to do those fields anyway, so we're just moving the timeline up a little bit because of this opportunity.
You might be speaking of the turf project.
Turf fields and the backstops, yeah.
Yeah, so this work that we would do ahead of the Softball World Series, we would not get the turf work done in time for that.
Right.
But yes, the backstop portion of that work, we would be accelerating in time for the World Series.
Gotcha. And then the turf would be done before the following year?
Well, it's a proposed project in the CIP, you'll see that as counsel when the CIP is presented to you in project committee, that is a proposed project.
But that's not a requirement for the first year of the World Series? Okay. I would like to ask the council before they make a motion, I would actually like to write the word enthusiastically over my, like, on top of my signature, so I'd ask that the motion include that, if that's possible. If I, I guess I should ask the city attorney, am I allowed to do that without getting it in the motion? I am allowed to do that? Oh, well then it doesn't even need to be in the motion, okay.
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-48 with the word enthusiastically added.
A second. Okay, City Recorder, please read the number and title of the resolution.
Resolution Number 19-48, a resolution supporting Tigard Little League's efforts to have the Little League Softball World Series moved to Cook Park.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Resolution Number 19-48 is adopted unanimously. Thank you, very excited about this. Okay, we will move on to item number five on the agenda, which is to receive a quarterly update on city council goals. City Manager, whine. City Manager Wine.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Apologies for the delay. We have a presentation that's coming up here, and I'm borrowing a microphone. That's all right. What happened to this mic? Mayor and Council, I'm Marty Wine, I'm your City Manager, and I'm here to bring you a quarterly report about what's going on with City Council Goals. You'll recall that back in September, I gave you the last report about what was going on with our projects as they were getting going for the first and second quarter. At the beginning of this year, the five of you began serving together on the council, and back in February, you had a goal-setting meeting where you set your goals for the two-year period that you'll be serving together. You adopted those goals on March twenty-sixth, and at that point, we got rolling on the projects that are, that are part of this goal set. We've made lots of progress and many successes, so I'll touch on next steps and what we can look forward to in 2020. The first goal that the council has really focuses on the local option levy. And the theme of it is about financial stability and sustainability, but the objectives within the goal focus on the council's wish, your stated intent from the beginning of the year to seek a local option levy. The aim of the levy is to help, you heard the chief's report earlier, and it's to help with providing police services and to provide patrol services in our patrol districts and also address response times. So what we've been aiming to do this year, this goal focuses a lot about communications, about letting the community know about your intent to try to find a funding source to address that issue, and also using data to explain and inform our strategies and next steps and how we're doing. So we've done a lot with Goal One. In the last few months, we've tried to bring the message of the need for the levy and the services it will provide. You heard a report from the Levy and Bond Task Force. They wrapped their work up in October, and we've had many events throughout the community to continue to scope the levy. Looking ahead, we're going to continue to refine the City Report Card, which was delivered in October. And we, oh, I should mention more about the City Report Card. We distributed that through Tigard Life, so it went to every household, and we also pushed that first, I'm still calling it a draft because it's going to continue to evolve, but the City Report Card aims to tell the community across all of the services we provide how, what we're doing, how we're doing, and how key metrics for the community are moving. So we've created a, we've received compliments. We got some inquiries about wanting additional information about the report card, so we've created a repository where we're collecting those comments and trying to continue to refine the report card. So you'll see another iteration out of our City Report Card in the spring. The finance and communications teams are working on the popular annual financial report, the PAFR. The idea about that report is that it takes what is a very, you know, weighty tome of a document, budget document every year, and boils it down into plain language that folks can approach more easily. So you'll be seeing that as a publication come out. It's a, it's our goal to try to make our budget more approachable and easier to understand. Also related to the levy, we embarked on surveys of voters. We had, we conducted one in October, and there's another one that's been out in the field this last week. So a second survey is underway right now to figure out whether their, whether cost sensitivity will affect support for the levy. So you'll be seeing the results of that survey at next week's meeting. And we've also begun on the levy communications front to put together our neutral communications materials, and we're going to be needing, should the council choose to refer a levy to voters, to communicate neutrally to the public, once you choose to do that. So that's where we are with Goal One. The second goal that council adopted is about investing in key areas of the city to promote economic growth and community vitality. This, this goal corresponds to the strategic plan goal, Goal Two, which is about development, advancing the vision. So the idea is that the major projects that are in our centers are part of, you're wanting to see progress on a whole host of project progress during this time. So it includes projects in the downtown, in the Triangle, in downtown, our Southwest Corridor aims, which are the locally preferred alternative, and the alignment are coming together, and also initiating the changes to the Washington Square Plan Districts. So during the last quarter, and as we look ahead, we've gotten started on the, on the study for Seventy Second Avenue. There are a host of projects, you'll see they're under-accomplished, that are, we've launched the Washington Square Project, and so we have a consultant team who will be beginning to engage with stakeholders. We've selected a consultant to help represent us as the design for the Universal Plaza gets underway. And conceptual design is also underway for the Southwest Corridor Station area. You've awarded a design contract for Main Street Phase Two. Anyway, you can see here, there will be many projects underway. And there's a project to look at both the future of both of our urban renewal areas in the downtown and our, our vision for transit-oriented development, and it's called City Center Futures. So that's a project you can be looking for in the next quarter and beyond. The council's third goal is to ensure Tigard grows and develops in a smart and inclusive manner. It's really about guiding the way that Tigard grows across a few dimensions. One is, you gave us direction in these goals to look at concept planning for River Terrace South and West. And so in this, I'll speak in just a minute about the milestones we're reaching on that one. You've done a bunch of work early this year to adopt an affordable housing plan and to put a construction excise tax in place, and then we're going to embark on a study of employment land for future urban growth boundary expansions. And in this last quarter, you adopted an agreement with our partner developer for the concept planning in River Terrace. We've hired a senior planner who will be our project manager for that project, so that project will be kicking off next year with the idea that our application for urban growth boundary expansion would, it's going to take, that project is going to take about a year, and our application will be in summer of 2021. And you adopted a construction excise tax. So we have queued up a conversation for you in 2020 about the allocation of the construction excise tax. A preview for you is also you'll, we'll be bringing a decision forward about Tigard's status as an entitlement, community, for community development block grants. And I mentioned the employment lands analysis will get going in the next quarter. Okay, fourth goal. Fourth goal is about, it corresponds to our strategic planning goal three, which is about enhancing two-way communication. On the face of it, this goal looks like communication, but it really encapsulates many things. It's about communications and outreach and engagement and building relationships and partnerships. Some of this also has a, is a focus that the council has said that you want to have on getting out of City Hall and into the neighborhoods and really connecting with people. So here's what we've done in the last quarter and looking ahead. You saw, and you saw that Performance Audit Report was presented to you in October, and we've had several events related to transportation and other major projects that are underway. The Performance Audit Report was actually a big undertaking, and there's more to do. We brought you an implementation plan at our last meeting, and it has sixty-nine recommendations in it and fifty-eight performance measures, and so the implementation of it is going to be something you'll be seeing the progress on throughout, well, probably throughout the next three to five years. We've been reviewing our communication structure within the city and how we approach outreach and engagement. So we're aiming to, we're aiming to provide the best customer service experience possible, and so we'll be sharing more with you about what that's going to look like going forward. Part of this goal also includes a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And one of the, one of the signature events of this last quarter was the Multi-City Equity Summit, which some of you attended and took part in. And I think that we'll be debriefing and figuring, figuring out what our next steps as a community are to build off that summit opportunity. I forgot to invite you from the outset of my presentation that if you have questions about any of this, I hope that you'll stop and ask me. Okay, and finally, the fifth goal that council adopted is about enhancing walkability and pedestrian connectivity. This corresponds to our strategic plan goal number one, which is focuses on the physical walking connections that help create an identity for Tigard to be more walkable. It's about our transportation system and planning effectively for it. And there are a whole host of both projects, and there are a lot of efforts underway that will solidify our long-term planning for transportation underway. One thing we did immediately upon adoption of this goal was ask you to adopt a budget that achieves the goal, which one of, one of the goals said that the CIP would achieve a standard of the majority of proj, or I think it's ten percent of projects would focus on on walking connections. You also adopted the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan last month, or this month, at the beginning of this month. Our Safe Routes to Schools program is going strong, and we achieved a lot with events this fall on Safe Routes to Schools. Let's see. And then as we look ahead in the next quarter, we're going to be, we're going to be kicking off a whole host of projects. You've heard about our Transportation System Plan Update. We are going to be working on a sidewalk infill study, and you heard about some of this when our City Engineer Lori Faya brought you the CIP report last month. So that's where we are with the, with the walkability goal. And that's all I have. As we're wrapping up 2019, I guess you can see, I feel like we've accomplished a lot this year, and it was a busy year. I want to thank our team here at Tigard for being instrumental in getting a lot done and these accomplishments. So we're continuing to make progress on the council goals, and I hope you'll keep that momentum into 2020. Do you have questions or anything that you'd like to focus in on? I know that's a lot to cover, but.
Counselor Newton.
Yeah, I want to commend the staff, too. There's been a lot of progress made on these, and I'm hopeful that, as appropriate, as we work through the performance audit recommendations, we can maybe see some linkage there. Where's appropriate, you know, not to find something, but that would be helpful as we're communicating with the community about our progress on the goals and, and the Performance Audit recommendations, so they could be connected. That would be great.
Thank you. I should have mentioned that one of the things you're going to see coming forward with a refreshed strategic plan and the Performance Audit recommendation for annual work plans is we're going to be trying to make that linkage very clear, not only that we're meeting the goals, or we're meeting the recommendations of the Performance Audit, but how that relates to, or the work plans that we're going to be bringing forward will, will demonstrate where we're implementing those recommendations. Thank you.
I have like a very specific question, just because I, it helps the way my mind thinks. What is the name of the project, the senior planner, that's going to be project managing?
Skylar Warren.
Okay. Council President Goodhouse? Oh, Counselor Lubin.
Oh, I was just going to acknowledge that I think it's really helpful to have these quarterly updates, and I acknowledge that I think as a council, we understand that staff is always really busy, but I think it's always overwhelming to see exactly how busy, when everything is written out and everything that they're constantly doing and achieving. So thank you so much for bringing the update to us, and thank you to the Tigard staff who worked so hard to, to process all of this and to have it continue to move forward.
I think admittedly, we are asking a lot.
Yes.
Of our team. And they're delivering, so thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, City Manager Wine. We'll move on to item number six on our agenda, which is a public hearing to consider resolution on adopting stormwater rates. First thing I'm going to do is open the public hearing. Hearing procedures, anyone that wants to offer testimony will be allowed to do so. There's a sign-up sheet at the back of the room that's being brought up to me now. Utility Manager Goodrich, staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. For the record, my name is John Goodrich, Utility Manager, Public Works. With me this evening is Lori Faya, City Engineer, and Doug Gabbard, who is the project manager and is the consultant with FCS Group. Also, I have quite a few staff that were part of the project here, including Mr. Reiger and Mr. LaFrance, as far as support from finance and from Public Works. So tonight, we're bringing this item for council consideration with regards to completion of a stormwater utility rate study and consideration to adopt an amendment to the Master Fees and Charges Schedule effective July one, 2020. This study was necessary to develop a funding strategy that meets the Tigard Municipal Coke provisions three point three two point zero three zero, which is a mouthful of numbers that's basically about our, our guidelines and provisions regarding the method for determining rates and fees and charges. Staff and FCS Group have prepared a presentation of findings and recommendations. As our time with you this evening is limited, with council's permission, requesting that perhaps council could hold questions until the end of the presentation, and then all of us here tonight are available to answer any questions as we move forward. Does that meet with Mr. Mayor's approval?
Absolutely.
So our attempt is to allow councils, much time is necessary, to review and understand the information presented and consider if the funding strategy meets council's goals and objectives relating to stormwater capital improvement funding programs into the adopted master plan. Staff is recommending council action to adopt the resolution, amending the master fees and charges as proposed in Exhibit Eight of the resolution. And with that, we will start the presentation.
For the record, Doug Gabbard with FCS Group. Tonight, we have a presentation that is a team effort with city staff. Our agenda for you tonight is to give an overview of stormwater programs. You would be comfortable with that? And then I will be helping you to understand the stormwater rate basics and some of the rate setting.
Mr. Gabbard, I'm sorry, could you move the microphone closer so folks can hear you? Thank you.
Test one, two, three. And after we talk about the basics of rate setting, we'll get into what the current rate is and what the rate needs to be in order to meet all of your financial needs. That is our agenda for this evening. Go.
So as far as the, the utility itself, from an operations and management perspective, we have a team, a staff within our Public Works that provides operation and maintenance of the stormwater system. This involves items having to do with street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, pipe inspection, using television camera, closed-circuit TV, pipe cleaning using the large hydro cleaners that you've seen that we recently purchased, and all things having to do with the vegetative maintenance in the riparian areas, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of activities that, from a Public Works perspective, that we are doing to enhance water quality, ensure long-term health of those creeks and streams, especially having to do with flooding and damage from water and surface water runoff. And then, of course, to protect the natural habitat that we're all lucky to have within the Tigard community, so.
All right. Mayor and Council, Lori Faya, City Engineer. So we've talked in the past about the stormwater master planning effort. You adopted the master plan in 2018. We talked about it. We reviewed it a little bit again a couple of months ago. But just a reminder that prior to that master plan, the city did not have a stormwater master plan. And so while we did operations and maintenance work, as, as John mentioned, we did not have an overall plan or any strategic plan about how to deal with, even to understand the full condition issues within the system, as well as with how to tackle those problems that we identified. So it was important with that master plan to really get a base understanding of our system. We found a lot of issues. We found a lot of issues. That master plan identifies projects and programs that represent a little over $50 million worth of need. The master plan recommended implementing those projects over a 20-year period to achieve the desired results. So those, that work includes about $30 million of that is for capital projects to address largely, large erosion problems. You've seen the videos and the pictures of staff standing in these great big grand canyons of Tiger. So those are problems that developed over many years of not managing stormwater. Prior to 1991, there were no controls required of new development for stormwater, they're then stick it in a pipe and get it out of here, and it caused a lot of erosion and pollution problems. Since 1991, there's been a series of requirements with the cooperation of Clean Water Services that have been put into place for new development, but we continue to have those older problems, and that's what the master plan proposes addressing. That erosion will continue if we don't address it and put into place those capital projects, as well as some programmatic projects such as major maintenance and cleaning out and rehabbing stormwater quality facilities, replacing culverts, those types of things. So I, we went forward with this rate study to figure out what would it take to implement those, because basically, the money that we collect now largely goes for operations and maintenance. Here and there, it's gone for a few capital projects as we've been able to squeeze them in and pretty much as emergencies have occurred. We'd like to be much more strategic about that, and that's what you'll hear tonight about, what it would take to implement these projects and programs in addition to doing the maintenance that we need to do, and that our current funding will not cover all of that. I'd also like to note, you can go to the next slide, that we went ahead and just recently, we conducted a public survey on our city engagement site, and council get a copy of these.
The city reporter has the...
You do? Oh, thank you. So this memo summarizes the results of that, and basically, we asked residents about, you know, do you live in Tiger? Do you live near a stream? And what do you think about the conditions of the streams, about any stormwater, water quality, erosion issues? What do you think are the priorities for the program? And I think it was great that we asked, because what we found was that of the folks that responded, a lot of them that did respond lived near a stream, which I think is not surprising when that's what the survey is about. They generally thought the streams are in fair condition, and I think that's actually a pretty fair assessment. The biggest concerns were about pollution and trash runoff from various sources and about erosion from stream bakes and construction sites. Interestingly, flooding was not a major issue for people, and actually, that mirrors the findings of the master plan, where I think I've mentioned before that we're very lucky in Tiger that we have protected our floodplains and stream corridors, and so we don't have as many flooding problems because we did that thing right. But we do have the other problems of erosion and pollution, and people identify with that. When folks were asked about what of the various types of programs to manage water quality erosion and flooding do they support, we basically saw similar support for the whole list that we gave. And we asked people to rate things from one to five and all of the different items regarding water quality, repairing erosion, enforcing standards, doing the street sweeping and catch basin cleaning, other maintenance practices and public outreach, all got a score between 3.8 and 4.2. So I think that shows pretty strong support for all of those types of activities. Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and get into stormwater rate basis study. So utility rates should recover the cost of providing service, and an issue here is what are those costs? Now, costs can be operating in nature, which tend to be very well behaved, and they escalate very gently, but they also include capital costs. Capital costs are lumpy and not at all well behaved, and the magnitude and timing of capital expenses can have an outsized influence on what your rates need to be, and we'll see what I mean there more in a minute. So rates should generate sufficient revenues to sustain the utility. They should charge for the services provided. In other words, the charge should be commensurate with what you're getting. They should recover costs equitably across different type, times, types of customers. They should achieve city objectives like revenue stability, like maintaining a minimum fund balance. If this were a water utility, we talked about water conservation in this context. So to see this in a more visual form, the things that go into a rate study include your budget, your capital improvement plan on the outer edges there, your fiscal policies like minimum fund balances. Also, potentially, your SDCs are a factor because they're an offsetting revenue. I sometimes get the question, if we raise our SDCs, does that mean I get to lower rates? And the answer is not nearly as much as you hoped. So it is an offsetting revenue, but doesn't necessarily give you as much relief as you like, which is why it's not that big of a deal that we're not doing the stormwater SDC until later on. So we're assuming no change in the status quo of SDCs for this rate study. So sliding into the numbers a little bit, one of the annoyances of doing stormwater rates in Washington County is the overlap between cities, city utility versus Clean Water Services. It can be a little hard to keep straight who's charging what and who gets to keep which money. And so that's what this table is designed to make as clear as possible. There is a rate that CWS charges, charges 75% of which stays with the city and 25% of which goes to CWS, but then there's the city surcharge, which is $2. When we talk about adjusting rates, we're talking about that $2 charge. So it's that $2 that becomes something else in the context of adjusting rates here. We have some assumptions about what's going on with CWS, and that is very important. On this slide, you'll see a number of the assumptions that we're using in our financial modeling for these rates. Time prohibits me from going into detail, you'll leave, but I do want to draw your attention to one of them. On the lower left corner, you will see the CWS stormwater charge grows by 50 cents per year. Now, that's an important assumption. It's a valid assumption, because that's what they've done in the past. They said that's what they intend to do. It's a good assumption, but if they ever change their mind, that is a material input into the financial plan, because 75% of each one of those increases each year stays in Tiger. And so if they change their plan of how they increase their rates, that will materially impact how you get to change yours. These are the capital needs that come out of the recent master plan. $40.6 million over a 20-year period, we can all do that division, that's about $2 million a year. But you'll notice, if you look at this chart, that you're much more above the $2 million line in the first few years. So this capital improvement plan is slightly front-end loaded. That matters, and I will show you in a moment why. Okay, so looking at what your current rate buys you, this is kind of a picture, you're going to see another version of this in a minute, but this includes operating expenses and some capital. This is what you can currently afford with your current rate, and while there is some capital in here, especially in the out years, it's not what you need. And so some of the projects and programs mentioned in your master plan will go unfunded if we stay at the current rate. And if we then move the math forward to show the effect on your stormwater fund balance, this is what happens if you try to afford everything that you need, but don't change your rates. Obviously, you're not going to have a situation where you have a negative fund balance and you get to a deep negative fund balance the next year, but we just want to show you how the algebra works. So it will not be long before your fund balance goes negative if you don't change your rate and you try to do all the things that you say you want to do in your master plan. So we have to raise the rate. The rate that we are recommending that meets all of the needs for the rate-setting period is $5.50 per equivalent service unit. That's an increase of $3.50 over the existing surcharge. This is being set for a fixed period of four fiscal years. Our financial modeling says that this will work for much longer than that, but that is the, that is the period for which the rate is being requested. So no further rate increases will be required in that rate-setting period of four years. So assuming that you do that, now your revenue moves up to the dotted line, where you're now able to afford all of those programs and capital that are listed in the master plan. So similarly, just as you saw all those negative fund balances a few minutes ago, this is what happens to your fund balance under the new rate of $5.50 per ESU. You can see that there is a noticeable pinch point in the 2026-27 period. That is kind of the cumulative effect of that front-loaded capital program, and then you start building back up again. That is well into the future. Capital plans will change by then, of course, but the important thing to know is that even though you're setting a rate for years, you're not going to be left at the edge of a cliff after those four years are done. We know it is important to folks to understand how they compare in the market on rates, and so here, we're trying to show you some comparable jurisdictions and also show you some distinction between the regional, like CWS rate and the city surcharge, and how that differs for each locality. In Clackamas County, they have their own annoyances. It's not CWS over there, it's Water Environment Services, but it's the same kind of deal. The important part of this slide is that one year after the rate increase, it looks like you moved a little bit to the right with the important caveat that we have no idea what's going on in all of these other cities. So many of these other jurisdictions are also going to be moving to the right, and it would not surprise me at all if everyone was in the same relative position for now. We know that there is some interest in franchise fees, and so we wanted to let you know how we modeled that in the rate study. We did the rate study with the assumption that there would be a 5% franchise fee that would be applied and remitted to the general fund based upon the portion of the CWS rate that is retained by Tiger and also the full monthly surcharge. That would yield, as you see in the third bullet point, about $205,000 to the general fund in fiscal '21. That's what I got, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions you have.
Let's make sure that we focus this on questions right now, we're not at a point of consideration or deliberation? Questions? Okay. Council President Goodhouse.
One question, I guess it's kind of a question, when we've talked about this before, do we have a set list of what the projects would be, which ones would be completed when, and how much they cost? I know that was kind of something we've talked about, and so that way, we can kind of, if we do decide to move forward with this, we can have that, really, that we can show the public that says, okay, this is what that $40 million is, and that's what the projects can be.
You have to do that before you can do the rate analysis, right?
Yes, so we have, from the master plan itself, we have a list, a prioritized list of capital projects, as well as a list of, I'll call them programs, like major maintenance. And what we did for this, this purposes of this study was we laid those out on a calendar and kind of adjusted them so that we could smooth it out a bit. There is, as was mentioned, a bit of front-loading, because we want to tackle that big Kruger Creek Canyon in short order, because it scares us. But yes, there is that, and if a rate increase is approved, what you would also see, which I think is even more concrete, is the proposal for the capital improvement program. What you would see within this timeframe, the projects laid out on that as well.
Okay. Because I was kind of hoping to see that as part of that, but if we have that, that's easy to get together, and that's great, because I think that's one of the big points. If we were to approve it with such an increase, it would be to really show what these are, what they are.
Yes.
Timelines, so you can actually see, okay, we're checking them off, we're getting done each year, these ones are scheduled to be done, and then the importance. Because as looking on that, I wonder if some of the other areas we're comparing the rates to, they may not have as much of the slopes that we do, or the creeks running through there, or the erosion. So there's one thing where you can kind of compare, maybe street pavement or something like that, but how many other have the hills we do and those big canyons, as we mentioned?
We do have the benefit of some wonderful topography in Tiger, and that does mean we have some considerable grand canyons. I would say there are definitely erosion problems in some of our other sister cities, anywhere from Tualatin to Beaverton and Hillsborough, but what I've heard from the folks I deal with in those jurisdictions, that I think ours are worse, unfortunately. Also, in terms of the projects, I could mention a few right now. I can reel off the top of my head.
It'd be good to give just a few examples for the public.
And descriptions of how they're kind of getting closer to the houses, and how it's falling in.
I definitely can. So the top priority capital project is to fix the Kruger Creek Canyon. Kruger Creek runs off of Bull Mountain, and there's basically a series of projects. That canyon is 10 to 30 or more feet deep. The channel is incised over what it used to be. And in the past, even along that creek, a number of years ago, the city actually purchased a house, because on two sides of it, the canyon walls are so steep and scary, we actually purchased the house. The hope is, when we are able to do the project to restore the creek and kind of bring its channel back up and handle the erosion, that perhaps we'd even be able to sell that house, which would be very helpful. It's also potentially impacting a couple of streets and some sewer lines. So that would be the first project.
By impacting, you're meaning putting those at risk, right?
Yes.
Let's be realistic about what this means.
Risks.
Yes, so actually, a great example in the past is that there's been several repairs that were done in Red Rock Creek, which runs through the Tiger Triangle. There were sewer pipes that were exposed by the erosion adjacent to the creek, and the pipes, no longer being supported underneath the ground, broke, and sewage was running down the creeks. And so there were temporary, a series of temporary repairs over a number of years that were done in that creek. The Red Rock Creek repairs are the next in line after the Kruger Creek repairs, because they're scary, but just not quite as scary as Kruger Creek.
Counselor Newton?
Okay, just to clarify on the franchise fee. So I was a little confused by the paragraph in the AIS, so the chart is helpful. So you're talking about the amount that would be sent to the general fund from this $5.50. The 5% franchise fee is 28 cents. So the $5.50 includes part of the, is, can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. So your code has a provision for 5% of gross revenues, and so we did our modeling such that we send 5% of the surcharge at the new rate, whatever that is, and at the CWS portion retained in Tiger, that goes to the general fund.
Right, okay.
And so that, that's kind of the worst-case scenario, so, you know, if there was not, if there were a lower franchise fee, there would be more money in the utility, and theoretically, the rates wouldn't have to be quite as high.
Got it.
You modeled it in.
Yeah, you modeled it in and included it.
That's right.
The only other question I have, City Engineer Faye, when you talked about, on the chart, on the graphs, I noticed new programs, and you just mentioned major maintenance. I was going to ask if you could elaborate just really quickly what you mean by that for the public, because you had CIP and then you had new programs. Thank you.
Yes, so major maintenance implies projects that are not like the huge creek canyon projects, but they're large enough that they're not standard maintenance. So for instance, major maintenance can include rehabilitating a pipe. We have a lot of stormwater pipes that the pipe itself has eroded over time, and there's holes in the bottom, and that causes a lot of problem when the water leaks out and causes damage. damage in places we don't want it to be. So repairing pipes, repairing culverts under roads, so we don't lose the roads. We also have major maintenance activities that are needed with, so as I mentioned, new development is required to build like these stormwater ponds to handle some of their runoff components. Well, over time, those can fill up with sediment, and they also can have problems with their inlet and outlet pipes, and it's like fixing those types of things.
Other questions? Counselor Anderson.
So as proposed, this will take effect July 1st. Is that right?
That's correct.
Right, so we have some time to educate and communicate with the public.
Yes, we do. We anticipate spending the next six months putting together the public outreach as far as communications, having to do with the increase. We have other increases that would be occurring in July. Back in January, staff had talked to council about a holistic approach, especially for public work speeds and charges, that July 1st, that would provide that in May and June, that we could ramp up and do perhaps a better job of communication with our public and do with notification of what those increases are, but just as importantly, what the value of the services are that we provide and how important they are for the community and for themselves.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions? Okay, we'll move on to public testimony. I have no one that's signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify? I take it there's no response to testimony from staff. I will close the public hearing. Counsel discussion and consideration of resolution number 19-49. Counsel President Goodhouse.
I'd just like to reiterate the point. I'd ask a few questions, but just for the public and anyone that's watching, some of these, as you mentioned, these are some really big canyons. There's already a lot of them getting closer and closer to houses. There's a lot of erosion problems, streets and things like that. We already had recently, it doesn't have to relate to this, but a pipe break that washed out underneath the road, and it's going to cost half a million. So we don't really tackle these items, and you look at big ravines getting bigger and bigger, you start looking at houses that could fall in, roadways washed away. On the spot, if you get the storm drain underneath the road, that doesn't get done, the whole road could get washed away. So some of these things are crucial, really crucial areas that need to be fixed and only getting worse. So it's hard to visualize unless you've really seen it, but they are major, major projects.
Scary is the right word when you look at some of them.
Yeah, and to think, just one big storm, and it could take out a hillside or neighborhood or, you know, half dozen, dozen houses or more or something.
Is there any other questions or a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 19-49.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City Recorder, please read the number and title of the resolution.
Resolution number 19-49, a resolution amending the master fees and charges for storm and surface water services.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, resolution 19-49 is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Excellent work.
Mayoral counselors, thank you very much.
We have no non-agenda items. The Tigard City Council will enter into executive session to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer under ORS 192.660 subsection 2i. All discussions are confidential, and those present may disclose nothing from the session. Representatives of the news media are allowed to attend executive sessions as provided under ORS 192.6604, but must disclose no information discussed. No executive session may be held for purpose of taking any final action or making any final decisions. Executive sessions are closed to the public. Counsel will adjourn from the Red Rock Creek conference room at the conclusion of the